I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Zwicker?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Corman?
Here.
Ms. Palmer?
Here.
Mr. Person?
Here.
Mr. Prince?
Here.
Ms. Brier?
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all present.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Zwicker?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to modify the agenda to add in item number four, public hearing. Just prior to the public hearing, we do some carryover presentations, one being the proposed utility system development charges, and the other is the presentation of the legislative budget. Second?
It's been moved by Mr. Zwicker, seconded by Mr. Corman, that we amend the agenda to put budget presentations ahead of the public hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is proclamations.
Proclamation, DECA Month. Whereas DECA is an association of marketing students who are developing leadership skills, learning about business and marketing, and setting future career and education goals; and whereas Lindbergh High School's 65 DECA members are part of an organization of more than 10,400 members in 144 chapters in Washington State; and whereas DECA prepares members to handle real-world situations in marketing, business, and entrepreneurship; and whereas DECA provides awareness to the Renton community about local and global issues through participation in multiple and varied community service projects; and whereas the City of Renton deeply appreciates the community service efforts of our local DECA members, now therefore I, Dennis Law, Mayor of the City of Renton, do hereby proclaim November 2012 to be DECA Month in the City of Renton, and I encourage all citizens to join me in this special observance. In witness whereof, I herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Renton to be affixed this fifth day of November 2012, signed, Dennis Law, Mayor of the City of Renton.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Brier.
I'd like to make a motion that the council concur in this proclamation.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Brier, seconded by Mr. Corman, that council concur with this proclamation. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. And I see we have a whole group of Lindbergh DECA students here to receive this.
Hey.
Go over to the podium.
So, my name is Chi Ta, and I'm president of the DECA chapter at Lindbergh High School. And this is from right to left is, this is Jackie, our secretary and treasurer, Cecino's our events, Vice President of Events, and Alyssa, our Vice President of Communications. And we'd like to thank you so much for proclaiming November as DECA Month, and we're very proud and we're very honored to have November as DECA Month, so we thank you so much.
Thank you, and thanks for coming down. We appreciate it. Okay, Bonnie?
Second proclamation is National Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas pancreatic cancer is one of the deadliest cancers and is the fourth-leading cause of cancer death in the United States; and whereas nearly 800 people will die of pancreatic cancer in Washington State this year; and whereas there is no cure for pancreatic cancer, and there have been no significant improvements in survival rates in the last 40 years; and whereas the Pancreatic Cancer Action Network is the first and only national patient advocacy organization serving the pancreatic cancer community in Renton and nationwide by focusing its efforts on public policy, research funding, patient services, and public awareness and education related to developing effective treatments and a cure for pancreatic cancer; and whereas the good health and well-being of Renton community members are enhanced as a direct result of increased awareness about pancreatic cancer and research into early detection, causes, and effective treatments, now therefore I, Dennis Law, Mayor of the City of Renton, do hereby proclaim November 2012 to be National Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Renton, and I encourage all citizens to join me in this special observance. In witness whereof, I herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the Renton to be affixed this fifth day of November 2012, signed, Dennis Law, Mayor of the City of Renton.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Zwicker.
I move the council adopt the proclamation as ready.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Zwicker, seconded by Ms. Brier, that council adopt this proclamation. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Is Michelle Buescher here?
Hi. I would just like to say thank you very much for this proclamation. My mom will be an 11-year survivor in February, and we definitely need more survivors, so I appreciate you taking the time to make this awareness for everybody, and hopefully we can find a cure.
Thank you, Michelle. Thank you. Okay, we're moving on to budget presentations. Ewan, are you gonna start off?
Intentionally.
With Dave Christensen.
Good morning, or good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. It's been a long night already. And I didn't know I was gonna be presenting to such a large crowd, but, you know, they were interested in my presentation. My name's Dave Christensen, and I am the wastewater utility engineering supervisor, and I'm giving you a very brief presentation on the 2013-14 proposed utility system development charges and public works construction permits fees. Next slide. In your, just as a reference, these are on your budget pages, 7-31 to 7-35, if you want to go back to those. System development charges and public works fees were last updated in 2008. And when we did that last time, that's when we made the change from, previously, we, our system development charges were based off a square footage basis for like, single-family and that, and we made the modification to go ahead and go to a meter-based for both sewer and water, so that's kind of a reference back to that time period. We did not do an update in 2010 due to both, we've, you know, obviously, we've all been going through some staff reductions, and also the economy being as weak as it was, we didn't feel that it was appropriate to bring it back at that time. The proposed SDC and permit fee increases, we're looking to phase those over a two-year period, so that the impact is not felt directly in 2013, it'll be shifted from 2013 and 2014, so that it's not all in one year. Okay. Increases in the SDC fees, these were based upon plant values, and what we did is we recalculated based upon current plant values. Those plant values have changed since 2008, that's primarily because of some very great work that Public Works and the Finance Department has done to make sure that we've captured our true plant value, so when we redid that calculation, that created that new fee. And again, that was part of that transition going from a square footage-based charge to a meter-based charge. The public works construction permit fee increases represent the estimated cost of We recalculated, looked at what it actually costs us to deliver the service, and I just wanted to let you know that it includes, the water meter fee increases include the AMR cost of our new-style meters that have the automatic meter reading in it, so that's one of the examples of that. We're looking to make a couple changes that include, currently, we have a separate system development charge on sewer and water for 1-inch meters versus 5/8ths by 3/4. We're looking to change that to make them the same fee. What we're trying to do is, we're trying to encourage the development community and everyone to use 1-inch meters now instead of the 5/8ths by 3/4. And the reason for that is, we're seeing a lot more larger home construction, which automatically requires those larger meters, and then with the changing regulations on the fire, fire regulations, that also is triggering people to be required to sprinkle their homes, and again, then needing the 1-inch meter. So, this is a way to encourage them to install the 1-inch meters versus the 5/8ths by 3/4. There's a, currently, a wastewater groundwater discharge permit that we're looking to eliminate simply because King County Wastewater Treatment Division has changed its rules, so this just reflects that rule change. And then the last one is just on right-of-way permits, we currently, the fee structure just has however many feet you're working within the right-of-way. On side sewers, that really doesn't apply, so we want to establish a specific side sewer right-of-way permit fee, so that there's not confusion over which fee would be triggered. Next slide. Proposed fee increases, you can see here that the, we're looking to, on the SDC fees, we're looking to raise the fees over the two years, anywhere from, you know, on average, 12% each year. And then in addition, I just gave an example of the 1-inch meter installation that shows that that's an increase of 18% in one year and 15% in the other. And again, the majority of those cost increases for the meters is due to, now, using the AMR system, that just added additional parts and material costs that we're gonna have for those meters. That concludes my slides. Also, you had handouts that showed the comparison fees of our system development charges compared to other, compared to other surrounding cities and districts. That reflects basically that even in 2013, on a total, the City of Renton would be the second lowest of any of the jurisdictions we compared against, and even in 2014, we would be, there would only be two jurisdictions higher. And that, that's with their 2012 fees. What I wasn't able to get, because they're in the same boat that we are, they don't know what their 2013, 2014 fees are gonna be till their respective commissioners and councils do their work as well. So, that, those fees on the other side could actually be a little bit higher if they have proposed increases. I also provided the potential revenue that we could, additional revenue that would be collected as a result of the fee changes, and that's just based upon the, our estimated budget numbers for 2013 and 14, and with that increase applied to it. And then lastly, you have something that's, we think's a little easier to read, or just additional to read from the budget book, we've shown what the proposed development fee schedule would be in color, so you could see what the increases look like. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Dave. Any questions from council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman.
Well, I thank Mr. Christensen for the quick presentation. I'm glad it was brief, we got a lot of people here. But I did wanna just clarify for anybody that's, you know, watching this, these are one-time fees for construction when these services go in, right? This is, the system development charges, we're talking about what you pay up front when you install these services.
That's correct. They're often referred to as connection charges for new customers who are making a first-time connection to the system, or in the case of surface water, adding new impervious to the.
So, I didn't want anybody maybe viewing in the audience or at home to think that this is a rate increase.
Our new monthly fee.
Yeah. And then I just had one question, it's a little bit outside of the system development charge, but, so, you're, we're encouraging the 1-inch meters for the reasons you mentioned, but they still carry a higher monthly cost, right? There's a higher monthly fee associated with those.
That is correct.
Yeah. Okay, which I think is fair, so, okay, good, that's all I had.
Okay. Mayor? Yes, Mr. Person?
I just wanna clarify that the AMR type, new type meters, I don't think the general public understands what that acronym is for, so could you explain that?
That's automatic meter reading. Basically, what it does is it allows us to, at any ti, it will allow us to read meters and check on water meters at any time. It will give us the ability that when, you know, right now, single families read once every two months, and sometimes a customer will have a leaky water service and they won't know about it for two months. This system will allow us to be able to monitor that, and when those types of hits happen, we can give instant notifications so that they're not, so that they don't have that bill. It also provides us more flexibility in how we do the billing and how we work with our customers.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman.
Mr. Christensen, for folks that have those meters installed, do we already have that capability to notify them, or do we have to wait till a critical mass of the city's been converted?
We are in transition, and there have been a number of events, we don't have the full program established, so we don't have it on a regular basis, but we have actually helped a couple of, the one that I have in mind is, we had a fairly significant problem for one of our commercial customers that we were able to address right there.
Good. Good. I think it's gonna be of great interest, I, I mean, I even wonder if at some point, if the software was available, if, I mean, I think in my own case, I'd be willing even to pay a fee to switch over earlier rather than wait, 'cause there's gonna be a seven-year transition or something, right?
Yes, it's gonna take six to seven years.
So, let's figure out a Corman fee, and we'll get.
Yeah, Corman fee, yeah. Well, it's a, it's a leak insurance, basically, right? So, you'd have somebody doing 24-hour surveillance whether your house springs a leak or not, is what you're ultimately able to do.
It will, we can act as part of that. You know, obviously, we can't guarantee that every time there's a leak, we're instantly gonna notify someone, but it's, it's an excellent tool to allow us to help the customers when they have issues even earlier than we currently do.
Yeah, that's the value in it, so, great, thanks.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Ewan, are you gonna, or no, Priti, are you gonna present legislative?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council President, Council Members. I'm Priti Shridhar, the Deputy Public Affairs Administrator, and I'm actually here to present the Legislative Department's budget to you. The Legislative Department is, comprises of all the council members and a council liaison, so in a sense, this is your budget that I have the privilege to present to you today. I did wanna pause a moment while you look at your names on the org chart to just bring up to the public what it is that the council provides for the community. The City Council assesses the needs of the public, sets priorities, develops and adopts the annual budget, ordinances, resolutions, and policy alternatives, and meets the needs of the public, which is to be consistent with the city's goals and objectives, and also helps provide coordination. So, this is really one of the most critical and key functions that sets the city in the course that it's going to take. Following that, in terms of the Renton results and the area that the primary focus is, it is in the area of representative government. The proposed budget, the numbers and the details are provided in the budget book under 3-1, includes basically the primary charges, you know, of the 1FTE and all the work and all the, you know, the limited compensation that you get for more than all the work that you do. In terms of some of the highlights of the budget and as you look forward to 2013 and 14, essentially, like all other departments, but, you know, with kind of extra fiscal responsibilities, the expenditures for the budget have been under budget, so it's been, you know, a conscious effort to keep expenditures down for the Legislative Department. However, we have had increases in personnel benefits, healthcare costs, and also inter-fund payments, primarily due to insurance and information technology and other costs. So, any increases that you see in the 2013 and 2014 proposed budgets are basically reflecting, you know, those increases in costs that, you know, we have to bear. In terms of performance measures, one of the most important performance measures that is, you know, established and for us to keep making sure that, you know, the city, the Legislative Department is following, is that the city is heading in the right direction, and this is, you know, reflective, that the community reflects that. We've had the survey, that we've had this question over the years, and so we've set a goal for 2013 and 14, that 80% of the community reflects that. The other very important measure is to look at what is the per capita cost of government service for the community, and the targets for 2013 and 2014 are that per capita, the community will be spending $1,061 for all the services that they get from city government. We have, again, the, you know, list of comprehensive measures in the Renton results section of the budget book. When you look at sustainability, you'll see that we've got here a range of different regional boards and committees that all of you participate in. AWCE, SCA, PSRC, Legislative Outreach, lot of regional events, and effective use of technology. The reason to put this here is really, it reflects how the work that you do for the city are able to leverage through your participation in all these different regional, you know, agencies and through coordination, and also actually bring back to the city core services and important services that benefit the community. So, that's one way that not only is the work that you're doing reflective of the specific needs of the community, but you're looking at it from a broader, more comprehensive and leveraged perspective. And that brings me to the most important slide. Do you have any questions of your budget?
Any questions from council? Okay, thank you, Priti.
Thank you.
So, with that, we're gonna move into a public hearing. Ewan?
Okay, so, before we start the public hearing, we typically will provide an overview of the city's budget and also what we're proposing in terms of 2013-14 revenue resources, and specifically, what we're proposing for property tax in 2013. And this, again, is required actually by state law that we do conduct this public hearing to set property tax. And typically, we would have started budget overview much early of the process, and because of the way that we scheduled everything, and this year, we actually have this as the overview for both council as well as the public as well. And today, we are now at public hearing, and we will have one more deliberation process or meeting on November 19th, and will, at that time, finalize council deliberation and start introducing the budget-related legislation. Just globally, citywide budget for 2013 and 14, the resources is 462 million, or 462.6 million, and/or proposed expenditure for the two years is 457.3 million. And I just did a couple of quick summary that about a third of citywide resources will be from taxes, that's the traditional taxes, as well as the building permit and licensing fees, so more governmental-related taxes, fees. And then we have about one-third is from service charge, that is utility rates, or if you use recreation programs, those programming fees, or if you use a golf course, the golf course fees, as well as airport charges. And all of those are really non-mandatory services, and people pay based on what they need. And then, last big piece is inter-fund or intergovernmental revenue, and we do have a lot of city directly support, city internal service fund provide entity-wide service, and that creates internal service fund charges. And then, the city also, not just the City of Renton, but all cities in Washington State, get a share of taxes collected at a state level. For example, fuel tax, we get a portion back to, for the street maintenance, as well as the street construction purpose, and leaker tax and leaker profits and so forth, and those are intergovernmental revenue. And those are pretty stable revenue, and that's the reason they are very important sources. And then, there are some other miscellaneous revenues and for the balance of the pie. And then, on the expenditure side, we have 290, almost 300,000, 300 million dollars are operating budget, and then we also have capital budget, which is about 75 million over the spanium, and 26 million for debt service, and then we have inter-fund transfers, and that's about 60 million. And this is another way to look at it, and as you know, that we actually try to break down our budget by service area, and the sixth service area the city has are safety and health, which is the number-one priority, and then we have livable community, representative government, mobility, utility, and environment, and lastly, is internal support, which ties all the pieces together. And the table in front of you shows that in 2014, we will have 667 positions, and how they break down by each service area, so almost half of our employees will be in public safety area. And the, again, this is a breakdown of our budget by operating versus CIP and debt and transferred, and again, this is two-year total, so about 150 million a year in operating budget, and then over 100 million on capital and debt. And so, when you look at those large numbers, it's very hard to get connected to our citizens, and so, we break that number down with the operating budget, so basically 296 million dollars, down by service area and by per person, and for everything the city does, it is costing per person about 1,600 dollars a year. That's including golf courses and airport, which not everyone uses and is really voluntary. So, but if you look at overall, 629 dollars per year for safety and health service, that's your fire, your police, some of your court costs in there as well, so about 130 dollars a month per person. And so, we talk a lot about city's budget challenges, and most of those challenges are in the city's general governmental fund, and that is the fund primarily supported by tax dollars, and that is also the fund that providing most of the quality of life and safety and health services. And so, again, similarly, if we look at the same revenue sources, in general governmental fund, we have two-thirds of our resource are from taxes, whereas the citywide taxes is about one-third. And so, you can see how heavily general governmental funds are relying on taxes. And then, among the tax categories, our large, single-largest taxing source is property tax, and that typically represents about one-third of our resource to pay for our operations. And if you look at the expenditure side, you can see the fire department, police department, and court, which is kind of typical public safety side of the chart, and then the rest of the pie. But overall, the 200, 202 million, 202.4 million, broke down into 185 million is for operating and 16 millions for debt service. Again, it's two-year total. Oops, sorry, wrong key. And this is a similar look by city service area, and how the, our operating cost is broken down, and how our FTE, our employment staff, is breaking, broken down. And as you can see, the general governmental portion of the FTE is 586 in 2013, and by 2014, we're actually dropped out to 584 FTEs. And again, safety and health is the largest piece of general governmental cost, and nearly 60% of our cost. And livable community is the second-largest, and then mobility and internal support is pretty large, too, and that provides all the fleet insurance and all those kind of services. And we did a similar look, just looking at general governmental portion of the budget, how much it costs per person. And in this case, 2013 general fund operating cost costs 1,061 per person in the city, and this is down from 1,073 in 2012, so about 1% decline from last year. And again, public safety or safety and health is definitely the largest share of the cost, and more, about 60% of the cost. and more, about 60% of the cost. Now, another way to look at our general fund revenue or general fund cost. And the reason we look at this a lot is because this is the way we can see where our cost drivers. And as you can see, the biggest portion of our general fund is in personnel costs. And that is both salaries and wages, as well as the benefits. And on this chart, it shows about two-thirds of our budget is in personnel costs. But also, I want to mention is in the internal service fund portion of the budget, half of that is also for personnel costs. So really, combined is nearly 70% of our operating cost is on people. And that's why, when we look at budget reductions, we, it will be very difficult for us not to look at how many people or how our pay and benefit composition is. And then, after those two sector, debt service is about 8% of our general fund. And other services is about 7%. That's including utility cost, and for example, our, our street light costs about a million dollars a year just to light the city, all the street lights. And we have facilities keeping the parks irrigated, and city buildings have water sewer and power. And that's another about a million dollars. So just those combined utilities is a big piece of the other services. And intergovernmental services costs about 6%. That is primarily for two intergovernmental contracts for our 911 service. So anytime anyone pick up the call to call 911, the city get charged for a fee. And at this time, it's about $23. And then, the second contract is SCORE. And actually, the city is a member of both agencies, so we have full influence of the operation and cost of those entities. Now, we talked a lot about our $5 million budget gap. And actually, when we started the whole budget planning early this year, we know we have about $5 million budget gap in the general governmental area. And over the year, we had some good news, or some improvements in certain area, but then, there are some other revenues got dropped back. And so, overall, at the end, we still end up at $5 million a year revenue gap, or the, the gap between revenue versus expenditure. And this gap does include, I want to make sure that you're aware that this include the portion of the funding we think we need to restore in our capital budget. And so, when we start looking at how to balance our 2013 budget, we really have basically three goals. One is, we want to minimize any service impact to the community. And the second is, we really want to minimize any stuff, the staff layoffs or impact on staff. And the third is, we want to start to build a more sustainable budget. And that is a piece of the capital budget coming in, because we have deferred major maintenance of our, our facilities, for example, or our parks. And so, we have to start reinvest and to bring them up to, to standard. And so, that is one of our goal, and that's why the capital is one piece of our, our gap, and we try to bridge them. And so, the way that the administration tried to bridge the gap is look at both revenue as well as expenditures. And we really appreciate council's direction early this year that allow us to consider revenue. And we also spent a lot of time during earlier part of this year, working with our unions. And the result is their help, with their help, we were able to reduce costs by about $4 million a year. And then, with the new revenues, basically bring us to about $5 million a year. And so, we try to balance the different sources, the different impacts, and again, try to minimize any service impact. But in the end, I want to actually point out the union agreement portion. This is just general fund portion. Basically, we have two pieces of medical premium adjustment. One is, we're changing the way we will be setting our premium increase. When HR manager, administrator was here earlier tonight, she mentioned that as well. By resetting how we calculate premium increase, the city will, will save about a million a year in 2013, and then, it will actually increase in 2014. So that's very substantial. And I can see there's a question on council face. I will go through that and ask you your question. And then, there's a second piece that is, remember, we built our fund balance. And in the part of discussion is, the city will get a benefit from the fund balance, and the employee will get a piece of the benefit as well. And that amount alone is 1.3 million dollars citywide, but general fund is nearly a million. So without those numbers, we wouldn't have, wouldn't be able to bridge our gap without even more position reductions. Is there a question? Okay.
Council, have any questions? Okay.
So, again, everything city does, you know, people pays for it. And we have 94,000 residents now in Renton. And we also have almost 47,000 employees, employment base in Renton. And so, it's combined business and residents pays for city service. And if we break down our costs, as we mentioned earlier, our general governmental cost is 1,061 per residence per year. And, but if we include our employment or business, that's actually part of the consumer of the service, that will be $722 per person per year, or about $60 per month for everyone. And now, I do want to say that our, our local tax base actually is much bigger than what the city actually get. And so, when we say the city is not having enough money, the city, it doesn't mean that our local taxpayer or tax generation is, is not sufficient for, for Renton. But it's the portion the city get is, is not enough, or not sufficient.
Say what you're thinking, go ahead.
And so, for example, in property tax, every property tax dollars you pay, the city get 23 cents of that. And the, the rest of 77 cents goes to other government entity. From state to school, to King County, to library, to EMS, hospital and port. So there's a lot of governmental entities, and the city basically is just a portion of it, less than 25%. And then, sales tax is another one. I think I mentioned this before, we really have one of the very strongest sales tax base in the state, and local economy generate over $200 million in taxable transactions. And the city, however, get only 10% of sales tax generated in Renton. And state gets the largest piece, 70% of that goes to the state. And then, some transit or regional transit authority, and King County Metro Transit, get about 10%. So they get as much as the city actually get from local economy. So I, I want to spend some time on explaining why our 2013 budget gap is as, as large as it is. One of our, our major revenue source is property tax. It generate a third of our general governmental tax base, basically, revenue base, is limited by state law. And so, I know this is a busy graph, but basically, our assessed value increased over the second half of 2000s, and then, start to decline after 2009. The assessed value typically lags the market by about two years. And that's why it didn't show the decline as soon as the real estate bubble burst it in 2007, and actually showed up in 2009. That's our peak in our assessed valuation, and then, it started declining. And then, the city's property tax collection, when divided into the assessed valuation, become our tax rate. And so, when the assessed value was increasing, our tax rate are decreasing. And then, now, when, when, again, it reverse, reversed trend and assessed value decrease, our tax rate start to increase. The problem we have now is, if we, if we just follow the state law and increase our property tax by 1% and new construction and so forth, our tax collection will be so high that it will push our tax rate over $3.10. And that is, by state law, we cannot exceed. And so, actually, if we do nothing, the tax rate will be $3.30 or so. And this is even busier line, graph. But basically, it shows that this blue line is our tax revenue. And because of the rate cap, our revenue will be below the regular, regular line. And it will be multiple years, and not just one year. And so, this, I think, put it in numbers, maybe people can grasp easier. So without our tax rate limit, our 2012 levy, including the re-levy of refunds that made back in County, would allow us to generate 34.4 million. And with the cap, so under $3.10, our base levy will only be 32.8 million dollars. And then, we have new construction and annexation, so property tax, that remains the same. So our maximum we can levy is 32.6 million. So the difference is 1.8 million dollars. And basically, the 1.5 million dollars base tax gap, plus the 1% growth that state law allows, we can no longer capture because of the tax rate limit. So that's a reason that we really lost about, yeah, a little bit under $2 million in your property tax in 2013. We do think that starting 2014, the assessed value will improve, and we can potentially capture part of it. But because of the base, now, we got stuck at 33.5 or 6 million there until, and we will not be getting the additional 1% growth. So we will still be behind what we normally have, even with the recovery of assessed value. And I also just want to remind everyone that we have made substantial budget cuts over the last four years. We started in 2008, mid-year, we cut budget, and this is doling million, millions in positions. And so, overall, in the 2013, 14, two-year combined is $8 million expenditure cut. And so, over time, we cut $33 million in total and 108 positions. And most of these costs are in general governmental funds, not all of them. So I want to also show one other way of looking at our general fund situation. And over time, there's a two, the bars are the population. So our population has been stayed pretty smooth growth over, you know, the last 20 years or so, until 2008, when we had a substantial annexation. And then, it actually, and then, the census and discovered that we actually have more population than we even knew, and so, that's another big jump. So anyway, the bar shows our population. And then, the lines, the two lines it shows per capita, general governmental expenditure. And you can see in 2000, current 2013, 14, our proposed about $1,000 per capita cost is almost the same as 1996, which at that time was about $1,000 per capita. And if we take into consideration of inflation, and that's orange line shows. So you will see that actually, our cost per capita, adjust for inflation, start, actually been consistently declining. You know, it was stable in 2000, between 2002 and 2020, 2007, but start to decline because of budget cut, as well as because economy of scale of the annexation. And then, to the current level, it's just a little bit about $600 per FTE, per capita. So anyway, that is kind of highlights of our budget, our general fund budget, and our proposed levy for 2013. Is there any question?
Any questions from council?
I guess this, that last chart, how did the, the library figure into that? We, when we joined KCLS, does that show up on this as a?
So actually, the cost portion, you're right, I did not remove cost from the historical. And we had about $1.8 billion per year in cost, so it's about 2% of our general governmental budget.
Not a lot, but it's, okay.
Any other questions from council?
Starting 2010 on, 2010 on, where that would be reflected.
Starting 2010 is, yeah. But so, 2007 through 2010 is true, true cost reduction.
Okay. Mm-hmm. That's a lot.
And I do have one more slide I forgot, that we do have more than just traditional ordinances that we will need to consider. And based on the fee increases, as well as the new revenue sources, so we'll have almost seven, seven or eight adjourned resolutions and ordinance will be presented to council on the 19th.
Okay, thank you, Ewan. Madam Clerk, do we have any correspondence?
No correspondence received.
Okay, this is a public hearing. We have several people that have signed up to testify to the council on this budget. When I call your name, please come to the podium, give your name and city of residence for the record. And you have five minutes, there's a timer next to the city clerk. So I want you to watch that when it turns yellow, you're just, just about out of time. I think we're losing our deck, students. Thanks for coming tonight.
Mr. Kay's getting tired and has to get home.
School starts at 7:20?
Okay, first is, first is Rich, Rich Brooks.
Good evening, my name is Rich Brooks. I reside in Seattle, Washington. I'm the Executive Director of Renton Area Youth and Family Services. And I sent you all a letter a few weeks ago about the Community Services Committee funding, recommended funding reduction to Renton Area Youth Services. We're currently funded at a little over $45,000 this year, and our funding recommendation was reduced to $20,000 per year. And I'm asking you to strongly consider a $30,000 allocation. This budget reduction is, I think, out of proportion to our history with the city of delivering quality services to our most challenged youth and families. We've been serving the community of Renton since 1970, as many of you know. And our staff and board make many contributions to the city beyond the services we provide. But we do provide great services. And we work to ensure that families are healthier, that kids stay in school, that they develop post-high school plans, that they not end up in jail, that they're not shoplifting. And we definitely feel like we contribute to a healthy community, and have demonstrated this virtually since our beginnings. And my best understanding of why this cut occurred was a sense among the committee that they wanted to spread the available money more thinly. So they provided a number of small allocations to newer organizations. And I think what happened to us is we became a target in that process, because we were funded at a higher level and have been for some years. There's no organization that's serving a more diverse community than we do. We're serving kids from all over the world. 95% of our clients are low-income. So we're, we're serving the community that you want us to serve. And I feel very strongly that this reduction was without any really good rationale. And we're going to have to raise the money in a time when that's extremely difficult, you all know that. And I'm certainly cognizant of the situation with the city, listening to the budget president. And I'm certainly cognizant of the situation with the city, listening to the budget presentation and being aware of this before now. You all know I've been around a while, we're deeply invested here, and our commitment to this community is unmatched, I think, in many, many ways. And I'm simply asking that you consider a $10,000 increase to our recommended allocation. We have a young person who has participated in our program as our next speaker, and I appreciate your considerations, I understand the difficulties. But I simply can't let this evening pass without letting you know that I'm deeply bothered by this. I'm someone who has had a long-term commitment to the welfare of kids in this community, and I feel like we've been injured by this decision in a, in a, in a sense to spread the money more thinly. And that has simply hurt us and has hurt our program. And you will hear from our young person who's going to be up next about the value of this program. So I thank you and urge you to reconsider our allocation. Thank you.
Next is Kylie Fisher.
My name is Kylie Fisher, and I reside in Auburn. And I am one of three youth life coaches through the Spark This program with Rentin Area Youth and Family Services. And I am currently a youth life coach at both Lindbergh and Renton High School. And I have had the pleasure of working with these two wonderful students, KJ and Michael. And I have witnessed not only academic achievement, but also behavioral growth in, in my students. And I'd really like for Michael to, to speak about his experience in the program. So this is Michael.
Hello, I hope you're having fun. My name is Michael Rosair II. I've been, I'm a sophomore at Lindbergh High School. I've been in the Raze program for, this is my fourth year. And in this program, I've been learning a lot of things from maybe social to academic confidence. For example, last week, we went over, see, today was the end of, yesterday was the end of the quarter for our school, and me and Kylie Fisher last week went over missing assignments. And we also went over how I was feeling as I was going through school, which really helped me in, you know, going through classes and paying attention. Because if you're not emotionally ready for class, you are less likely to pay attention. So that really helped me as well as the academic. To thank, I thank you for the, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Michael. Okay, next is Erica, Erica Horn.
I want to thank the mayor and the council for hearing our, our feedback tonight on the budget. My name is Erica Horn, I'm the executive director of Hero House. We're a program that's situated in Bellevue, but we serve all of King County, primarily east side cities. But we have people that come from all over the county to receive our services. We serve adults living with mental illness, and we assist them in reclaiming their lives and rejoining their communities. We have a heavy focus on supported employment. I know you guys are, everyone's aware of the talk about jobs are the way out of the recession. We believe that wholeheartedly, and we work every day to assist some of the most disabled folks in regaining employment and rejoining the community so that they too can be productive members of society, contributing back to the revenue that cities and county governments are able to utilize to pay for the services that they need. We are a newly funded allocation in the, this year's City of Renton. We've applied the last, I think this is our third time around. So I want to thank you and I appreciate, I appreciate you not funding us the last few times because we are a seven-year-old organization as of December 5th. And I'm one who likes to prove we can do what we say we can do, and I'd rather gain the trust and respect of organizations that are funders as well as community legislators and state legislators. So I appreciate that you took your time or that the Human Services Commission took their time. And I think that we spoke for ourselves in our reports and in our recent grant application. And I believe that's why there was a trust entrusted in us this time. So I'm really here tonight to thank you and ask that you approve the allocation that has been recommended for Hero House. I can't tell you how many times I have the opportunity to hear the stories of success and recovery that occur thanks to the services that people receive at Hero House. And as many are aware, this last year was a devastating year for mental health services in the state. The state budget wiped out service money completely to Clubhouse Services, which is our program. And thanks to our longstanding relationship and honoring all of the commitments that we've ever made in, in grants and in contracts, King County stepped in and was able to find money through the MID program. And so we were able to replace those lost dollars. But it just keeps us alive, and funding from the cities helps fill the gap as we grow and as we increase the number of services we provide to individuals. So I just want to thank you again tonight, and thank you again and encourage you to continue to maintain the recommendations that were made by the Human Services Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Kalphani Carter.
Good evening. My name is Ramona Baldwin. I am a proud resident of the Renton Highlands, and I'm here to say thank you for funding the Alliance of People with Disabilities at the, at the level that we were able to receive. It is wonderful to see the support of all of our cities within the county. It is a countywide organization. What we do is provide independent living services to anybody who has a disability in the, in King County. And that can be anybody who has any type of disability. So not only physical disabilities, but mental health issues as well, and LD, and the list goes on and on and on and on. But it is very important that we start, that we continue and start to bring our message closer to people in suburbs, especially in the south suburbs. People are underserved, especially the veteran population in the south. And we are making, and continuing to make plans on, on how to bring those services closer. I have people who literally spend three hours on an access bus to get to me so that they can receive services. I am the assistive technology practitioner for the agency. I not only fit people with devices, but I also teach some strategies so that they can go back to work, so that they can pay taxes, so that they can keep their house, just like I did. So yes, I'm self-disclosing, it is the Alliance of People with Disabilities. Eighty percent of our employees have a disability, and I am proud to say that I am one. So, thank you for supporting us.
Thank you. Next is Gary Sampson.
Good evening, mayor and city council. My name is Gary Sampson. I'm a resident of Newcastle, Washington. I'm a school district employee. I'm an elementary school counselor at the newly opened Honeydew Elementary. I see a couple of our mentors here. I want to thank you for sharing all that tax dollars with the schools too, yeah. I'm here tonight because I'm the board, volunteer board president of Rentin Area Youth and Family Services. In that capacity, I serve with other community volunteers to direct the organization that has served Renton, as Rich Brooks said, for about the last 40 years. Our proposal has been to support this program called Spark This, and I would agree with Mr. Brooks that, you know, any allocation, and both maintaining the allocation that was provided and an increase would certainly be appreciated by the organization. As city council people, I know that your job is to make strategic investments on behalf of the City of Renton. And I want to thank you for making a strategic investment in human services. And part of that strategic investment is making an investment in Rentin Area Youth Services and a program that serves middle school and high school students that are at risk. So that strategic investment up and down the line is important. In addition, and one of the ways that your investment in us is leveraged is that we use volunteers. We use groups, groups of volunteers to maintain and fix our buildings. We've had people from Lowe's, from the Gates Foundation, church groups come and both with repair and enhance some of our facilities. That means that we can take dollars from, precious dollars from the City of Renton and allocate them directly to services. There are, we also, but some programs cannot be operated by volunteers. The children that we serve and the young people that we serve have complex, multi-layered problems. And many of them then require some specialized assistance of staff, and that staff needs to be well-supervised so that those children can have success academically, they can have success emotionally, they can stay within the law and become productive citizens of Renton and pay taxes to support that budget that we have reviewed in such detail here tonight. So I would just ask you to carefully consider your strategic investment in Rentin Area Youth and Family Services, an agency that has served the community extensively, and particularly at Spark This program that serves high-risk students that we can keep in school, keep out of trouble, keep out of the law enforcement, out of the criminal justice system, instead make all those kids productive, positive citizens of Renton there too. So thank you very much for your work and your service on behalf of our community.
Thank you. Mark Persley.
My name is Mark Persley. I'm a resident of Cascade Neighborhood here in Renton. I am here representing, though, the Greater Maple Valley Community Center, and I'm here to ask for your support with human service funding for Date Wise, which is a teen dating violence prevention program that we operate here in the city. This is a curriculum that was actually developed by an agency here in Renton in, I believe, 1994. And the Maple Valley Community Center picked up the curriculum in 1998 after that agency stopped running the program, and we've been successfully running it in a Tahoma School District for the past 14 years. We are proud and very happy to have brought this program back to Renton. We currently operate at Lindbergh High School, serving, well, we're on target to serve about 250 students this calendar year with the anticipation of almost doubling that next year. This is a research-based best practice designed to protect our young people. I'm sure you've seen our, our application for funding, so I don't need to go into the statistics and tell you how, how devastating domestic violence can be economically, socially, emotionally, it just tears up a community. So it's our pleasure to be able to try to make a difference on that here in, in the City of Renton. And on a personal note, I've worked and lived in a number of, of communities around the Northwest, and I just want to thank this council for your commitment to prevention. Not, not as many communities around the area as you would think are committed to prevention. What you're doing is saving lives and you're saving money at the same time, so I thank you for that commitment, and I thank you for what you're doing here at the council.
Thank you. Was there anybody else that wanted to testify for the public hearing? Mr. Mayor? Mr. Zwicker?
Would the public hearing be closed?
Second.
The move by, Mr. Zwicker, second by Ms. Breyer, that the public hearing be closed. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Yeah, I just like to say, I'm always touched by the number of people that are out there actively volunteering and overseeing these really important human service functions. And, you know, regardless of what happens in this budget, I, I want to just say I'm, I'm just, I, you know, I, I feel very, very, very appreciative of all the work that this community does to, to help lift us up. And many of the services you're providing clearly are much greater than the dollar value that, that, that people have pledged, considering all the labor that people are putting into it. So I, I want you to know that as we're, as we're here struggling with the budget, that I don't want you to, to ever think that we're not really valuing all the work you're doing. So thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Carmen. Okay, moving on to administrative report, Mr. Covington.
Mr. Mayor, I have one item tonight. I'd want to announce to the public that the City of Renton and the, and El Centro de la Raza are teaming up to offer Get the Facts on Home Ownership. It's a workshop to learn what it really takes to become a homeowner. This free program will give you facts and dispel common myths about homeownership that could be unnecessarily keeping you from buying or owning a home. The workshop will be held this Wednesday at the Highlands Neighborhood Center from 6:30 to 8:00 PM, and information is also available in Spanish or English by calling 206-957-4639, or emailing homeownership@elcentrodela raza, all one word, dot org. The Highlands Neighborhood Center is located at 800 Edmunds Avenue Northeast. Hope that folks are interested, we'll attend, good information for them. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Covington. Next is audience comment. We have a couple people signed up to address the council. When I call your name, please come to the podium. You have five minutes. Please give your name and city of residence for the record, and the timer's next to the city clerk, so. Mark Martinez.
Good evening, Mark Martinez. I live in Renton, Washington, up in the Highlands. So two weekends ago, there was a tragic shooting in my neighborhood, as most everybody knows. And I just wanted to come and say thank you to the police and all the emergency responders who came out. They did just a bang-up job, even the one who yelled at me when I tried to go in my house. Just an excellent job, coming out there, securing the area, helping my, my next-door neighbor who was shot, and taking him to, to the hospital to get taken care of, doing the first aid right on the spot. Happy to report he's back at home recovering. Same thing with the mother-in-law in Issaquah. So she, she's doing okay too. I think she still is in the hospital though, but they're all, the family's doing great. You know, the, the local and media found the craziest person to interview, so I ended up being the spokesman for my neighborhood. And it was good because Channel 7 got behind a tree and got the, the police tape and the shot-out window and the cop walking down the street with the assault rifle as the Renton area crime scene. And then he went to Issaquah and he got the really nice house with the big lawn and the rainbow and the unicorn in the front yard. But I'm, I'm proud to say that I, that I live in Renton because it's a great city, we have wonderful city employees to, to make sure we're safe. I'm happy that we're spending all the money on health and, health and services that, that we talked about earlier today. And again, just thanks, thanks for all the hard work and the dedication that our police and, and emergency services gave last weekend. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just wanted to thank Mark too for stepping up. I know your family was rattled, body was found on your back porch. Luckily, it wasn't a body, it was still a breathing person. But thank you for stepping up. I know you organized a work party yesterday, and that's just a wonderful.
Yeah, we had a couple of neighbors get together. We replaced the siding in, in the front, front, the front of the building. We got a new window, a new bedroom door and frame that had been kicked in on the inside. We patched up some holes on the interior of the, of the house. Community kind of really came together and, and took care of itself. You know, there was some insurance there, but deductibles and everything, and it just, it wasn't worth it to put in a big insurance claim when most of the materials and labor was, was readily available in the neighborhood, so.
Nice.
Just wrapping around your community, because whatever happens in your neighborhood, it's, it's, it's your neighborhood, so it happens to you too.
Thanks, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.
Next is Howard McComber.
I'll make mine very brief. I'm Howard McComber, also in the Renton Highlands. I just wanted to come to mention to everybody, especially those who are watching in, that tomorrow is D-Day. Everybody needs to participate in government, we need to participate in our community. This isn't a community time. We, we do that election different time, and I'm certainly not speaking for any candidate or proposition, but I am speaking that we should all go and vote. If you haven't sent in your ballot, make sure it gets in, it gets all the right pieces so it'll get counted, all the right signatures, all the things you need to do. But it's an important part. Everybody can participate in, in our government and in our community, and one of the most important things is in voting. important things is in voting. I won't tell you how to vote, but I do think that you should do your very best to select those people who you would have, do what you would do if you were them. And you, as you study the people, we have wonderful people on every level and if we will support them and get them in and, and let them know that we're backing them, we can have a much better community nationwide, statewide and county as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Howard. Tom Hyland?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Thank you for letting me share the time here. I am here representing the men that are involved in the Renton River Days Parade, the Men's March Against Domestic Violence. Kevin, excuse me, Pastor Ken Coleman couldn't make it this evening. David Harris, who is involved quite readily with spearheading this activity, also wouldn't be here this evening. I've been fortunate enough to be able to participate for many years in this and I'd like to share just a little bit about it. The City of Renton Task Force Men's March Against Domestic Violence. This year marks the 10th anniversary of the Men's March Against Domestic Violence in the city of Renton. The idea was originally generated by the Renton Domestic Violence Task Force members and now the men participated in the march come from all around King County, from as far away as North Seattle. Most participants know about the march through their relationships with their churches or other religious organizations. Most men show up year after year, usually close to 100 strong. They bring their sons, fathers, brothers, friends, coworkers and neighbors. They have planning meetings, distribute flyers, conduct one-on-one outreach for a few months prior to the event, all in an effort to increase awareness and participation. They are incredibly dedicated and self-motivated and it appears they never give up. So this year, we were able to, 13th Annual Take Action Against Domestic Violence Awards winner from the King County Coalition Against Domestic Violence. So this is just a couple of pictures here that I wanted to share and this is our award. So, King County Coalition Against Domestic Violence Take Action Award 2012 presented to the Renton Men's March Against Domestic Violence. So I wanted to thank the city of Renton for funding the Domestic Violence Task Force in Renton and that, I'm sorry, I missed that, as actually I am, um, living in Tukwila. I was raised in Skyway, went to Renton, so I didn't get very far from here. But I wanted to thank you again and I wanted to share one other thing. When we're talking and my experience is being able to see, you know, how many people really respond and as we've heard earlier, that domestic violence is something that we all have to speak up about and that it is something that is an ongoing battle that we need to work with. So one of the things we share is a pledge that is victory over violence. I will value my own life, recognizing that a lack of self-identity and hope for the future lay at the roots of all violence. I will reach beyond my limitations, taking concrete steps each day to uncover my real potential. I will never give up on my dreams, even if they seem impossible. I will respect all life, recognizing that violence comes in many forms. I will not isolate myself, but will create an environment where others feel comfortable and can be themselves. I will see beyond superficial differences and reflect on my own behavior. I will inspire hope in others. With courage, I will resolutely stand up against violence, be it verbal, physical or passive, and teach others through my own example. I will support others and encourage them to follow their dreams. So, thank you very much.
Thanks for being here, Tom, and congratulations on the well-deserved award.
Thank you very much. We will continue to participate in this and continue to spread the word.
Sounds good. Thank you very much. Okay, council, we're moving on to the consent agenda. We have four items for council consideration. Are there any items a council member would like polled for discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Zwicker.
Clearing none and move the council concur on the consent agenda?
Second.
It's been moved and Mr. Zwicker's seconded by Ms. Breyer. The council concur with the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to unfinished business, Mr. Zwicker.
I don't believe I have any unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Taylor?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Corman?
Um, yes, I do, Mr. Mayor. Do I have a transportation committee report? Thanks. Oh yeah, transportation committee report. Thank you, Ms. Palmer. I've got two reports to present.
Transportation Aviation Committee Report Aircraft Tie Down Storage Rent Increase. The Transportation Aviation Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve an increase in the monthly rental for city-managed month-to-month aircraft tie-down storage at the Renton Airport to $106.34 plus leasehold tax, 120 with tax effective January 1, 2013. This is signed by the three committee members.
And, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman.
I move the council concur in the committee report?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Corman, seconded by Ms. Palmer, that council concur with the Transportation Committee Report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Transportation Aviation Committee Report Rent Increase for Month-to-Month City Tea Hangers. The Transportation Aviation Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve an increase in the month-to-month rent for city tea hangers at the Renton Airport from $372.21 to $393.62 per month plus leasehold excise tax being $444.16 with tax using the Consumer Price Index Urban effective January 1, 2013. This is signed by the three committee members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman.
I move the council concur in the committee report?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Corman, seconded by Mr. Person, that council concur with the Transportation Committee Report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, Ms. Palmer?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Person.
No unfinished business.
Mr. Prince?
Uh, Planning Development Committee has a committee report.
Planning and Development Committee Report Allocation of Highlands Subarea Funds. The Planning and Development Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the use and transfer of Highlands Subarea Long Range Planning Funds to support parks planning in the Sunset area in the amount of $280,000 and to support the Mads for a transportation grant for the Highlands to Landing Pedestrian Trail in the amount of $277,000. The committee further recommends that the remaining balance of the fund, $95,000, be carried over into 2013. This is signed by the three committee members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move that the council concur with the committee report?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, seconded by Ms. Breyer, that council concur with the Planning and Development Committee Report. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman.
Yeah, I'd just like to say on that item that I want to commend Chip Vincent and Erica Conklin and others that, that used that money. I thought it was pretty strategic use of that money that we put away more than 10 years ago, I think, when we had a budget surplus for sparking redevelopment of the Highlands and it's strategic to use that money now. It's, it's the right use, it's very consistent with why we put the money away at the time and it's a good way to keep the Highlands progressing.
That's right. Thank you, Mr. Corman.
That is all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Ms. Breyer?
Yes, there's two finance committee reports.
Finance Committee Report Approval of Claims and Payroll Vouchers. The Finance Committee approves for payment on November 5, 2012, Claim Vouchers 316165 through 316480, two wire transfers and one payroll run with benefit withholding payments totaling $7,595,087.29 and payroll vouchers include 729 direct deposits and 67 payroll checks totaling $1,651,901.24. This is signed by the three committee members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Breyer.
I move that council concur with the Finance Committee Report?
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Breyer, seconded by Mr. Taylor, that council concur with the Finance Committee Report. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Finance Committee Report Vision House Lease Extension. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve an addendum to the Edland Property Lease with Vision House for a house located at 10062 Carr Road to extend the term for an additional three years, January 1, 2013 through December 31, 2015, at the rate of $1 rent per year. The committee further recommends that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign the lease addendum. This is signed by the three committee members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Breyer.
I move that council concur with the Finance Committee Report?
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Breyer, seconded by Mr. Taylor, that council concur with the Finance Committee Report. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, moving on to resolutions and ordinances. We have one resolution and two ordinances for second and final reading.
Resolution, a resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, adopting the City of Renton Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Person?
I move the resolution be adopted as read?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Ms. Breyer, that this resolution be adopted as read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
The first ordinance for second and final reading regards water sewer surface water utility rates for the next biennium. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending Sections 822 and 823 of Chapter 2, Storm and Surface Water Drainage, Sections 8424 and 8431 of Chapter 4, Water and, and Section 8515 of Chapter 5, Sewer of Title 8, Health and Sanitation of City Code, allowing for adjustments to current utility rates for 2013 and 2014.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Zwicker.
I move the ordinance be adopted as read?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Zwicker, seconded by Ms. Breyer, that this ordinance be adopted as read. Requires a roll call.
Mr. Zwicker?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Corman?
Aye.
Ms. Palmer?
Aye.
Mr. Person?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Ms. Breyer?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor. All ayes.
The ayes have it.
And the second ordinance for second and final reading regards the solid waste rates. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending Section 8110 of Chapter 1, Garbage of Title 8, Health and Sanitation of City Code, relating to year 2013 and 2014 services and utility rates for all customer classes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Zwicker.
I move the ordinance be adopted as read?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Zwicker, seconded by Ms. Breyer, that this ordinance be adopted as read and requires a roll call.
Mr. Zwicker?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Corman?
Aye.
Ms. Palmer?
Aye.
Mr. Person?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Ms. Breyer?
Aye. I did that twice, sorry about that.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor. All ayes.
The ayes have it. Thank you. Moving on to new business, Mr. Zwicker.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a lot of new business. First, I'd like to make a motion to refer to the administration briefing on the consolidation of training between the departments, what's there now and if there are any potential efficiencies using the combined training. That's a motion.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Zwicker, seconded by Mr. Corman, that the topic of training and consolidation of training be referred to the administration. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Okay, then on to some call-outs here. Next Monday, November 12th, is Veterans Day observed, so there is no council meeting. On Tuesday, November 13th, beginning at 6:00 PM, is the library open house. That will occur here in council chambers. Council members are invited to attend. Also want to then call out Committee of the Whole for Monday, November 19th, 2012. Council members Palmer and Breyer, I, I've got it on the, the calendar at 5:00 PM. I think at this point in budget deliberations, 5:30 is probably sufficient, so that would knock all of you guys by a half hour when we get confused. So I'm going to call out Committee of the Whole, Monday, November 19th, beginning at 5:30 PM and that will be budget deliberations. And along those lines, I want to extend a lot of thank yous. I want to start with my fellow council members for participating and being here for the meetings. We covered a lot of territory in a fairly quick time, but I think it went well. I think everybody was engaged and we had some very good questions. Obviously, thank you to Mr. Mayor and Jay Covington for their hard work and putting up with us and getting a good presentation schedule. I got to continue to thank you to Ewen and her staff for very concise presentations and a great and easy-to-read budget. And something that I really did not do as we were kind of moving things quickly was thank the department heads for their presentations and the time that they took to give us very thorough presentations and to answer our questions. I really do want to extend thanks to that. And then also as a reminder then to, on a separate, completely separate topic, to my fellow council members on Monday, November 19th, at our council meeting, in new business will be the council president elections. And that should be all, Mr. Mayor.
Do you want to announce the executive session?
Do I do that when we adjourn, don't I?
Yeah, I, that'll be fine.
Yeah, there will be an executive session and I will make that motion at the end of the meeting.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Mr. Taylor?
Uh, yes, Mr. Ta, Mr. Mayor, I have just a few things I would like to just share that I've been doing over the past couple of weeks. One, I had a wonderful opportunity to participate at an event that I was invited to by the Acacia Foundation. They held their 7th Annual Dialogue and Friendship Dinner at the University of Washington Club. The Acacia Foundation has established the tradition of an annual dialogue and friendship dinner. They've done that since 2005. And the, the friendship dinners are organized to contribute to the progress of intercultural and interfaith dialogue and peace with the participation of esteemed guests and people from different faiths, cultures and ethnicities. And these gatherings have come to symbolize their desire to achieve a genuine cross-cultural understanding and cooperation. The keynote speaker for that event was a person by the name of Mustafa Akyal, who is a columnist for two Turkish newspapers and he currently has a book out. I could tell you that the information that I, I took away was eye-opening. I, I was able to learn some cultural nuances about the Saudi Arabia along with Turkey and it was a wonderful event. Also had the pleasure of sitting with State Representative Larry Sequest. We shared a table together. Also, I had an opportunity to attend the Zombias, the Zombian Communities 48th Annual Independence Day Celebration. This is the second year I've had a chance to attend that. It was held by the Association of Zombians in Seattle and they choose, they like our site, City of Renton, they held it at the Renton Community Center and it's a wonderful event, family and kids and they have a number of different things that they do during the event, a celebration of food, dance, fashion show. And one of the things that I found very unique but refreshing was that they had the kids there. So you had all these kids running around, celebrating and enjoying the event with their families, so needless to say, that was a fun event as well. Then also, just this past weekend, I, you may remember that I updated you all some months ago about a opportunity that our Somali Youth and Family Club was able to get through a partnership with Northwest Folklife, Washington State Arts Commission, which included a grant and a production of an opportunity for the community to showcase themselves to themselves through two documentaries, along with the showcasing themselves to the community at large as well. And they held their second and final documentary at Carco Theater this past weekend and it was just a wonderful event. They did the whole thing in their own native language. The play was written and performed by the Somali community and again, it was, you know, another fantastic event. And then finally, last Monday, I was at the Gates Foundation all day. That was the reason I was unable to be here at our meeting. And they held their homelessness strategy convening. The keynote speaker was Jeff Rakes. This was a partnership between the Gates Foundation and Building Changes and the, the goals of that meeting was to review data that are emerging from systems and from organizational and family-level evaluation processes, to learn more about what can be done and with real-time feedback from our partners about what's happening in the homeless community and also to reflect on past, the past two years of work and progress that has been done and to hopefully try to identify successes achieved and challenges faced. And then finally, to provide opportunities for cross-systems discussions about the implications of the data that we received from an organization called Westat and to find out more about how we can partner with existing agencies to stem the tide of homelessness throughout our, our region.[1782.16] our region. It was a wonderful event, there was a lot of things that I pulled from that day's event, and I look forward to sharing that with the council at a future date. And that is all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Taylor. Mr. Corman?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to announce a Transportation Committee meeting on November 8, that's Thursday, at 4:30 PM, and it's in the council conference room. We have just one item on that agenda, but it's an emerging issues item, which will give us just a high-level status on citywide truck route maps, downtown one-way couplet study report, taxiway Bravo project update, and night work variance, Cedar River Hangers Apron Rehab project update, Aerospace Training Center project update, and AccuWings parking lot rehabilitation project update. And as a reminder, we won't be taking action on any of those specifically, it's just status, but it should be an interesting meeting.
All right, thank you. Ms. Palmer?
Yes, the Community Services Committee will meet, not next Monday, two weeks from tonight, November 19, 3:45 in the council conference room. Just two items on the agenda. The first one is the Senior Center update, and the second one is RAC, Renton Airport Advisory Committee appointments. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Person?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the, I have a question for Mr. Corman, and, but first, the Public Safety Committee meeting scheduled for the 19th is canceled. On the Transportation Committee meeting, there will be now report, because just a briefing?
Well, that's, Mr. Person, that's my understanding in that it's all under one item called emerging issues.
Right.
And I was almost reluctant to read out the emerging issues, but that, correct, Mr. Zimmerman, no actions, right, he's agreeing, yeah, there'd be no actions taken, yeah.
Just wanted to verify that. Here.
Okay, Mr. Prince?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have on Thursday, November 8, 3:00 PM, in the council conference room, we have a Planning Development Committee meeting. We'll be discussing Title IV, Docket 8.
Okay.
That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And Ms. Breyer? Breyer?
Yes, I have to announce the Finance Committee for November 19, 2012. We're going to be meeting at 4:30 PM. Two items, vouchers and emerging issues and revenue streams. And then as a follow-up to some of the conversation that was happening with the budget, I'd like to refer to public safety, fire and emergency, I'm not sure, first response vehicle options.
Sounds good.
I'll second that.
All right.
It's been moved by Ms. Breyer, seconded by Mr. Person, that the topic of first response vehicles or, was it vehicles? You refer to the Public Safety Committee? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. ...
Ms. Breyer reminded me that I wanted to refer to the Public Safety Committee as well, Valleycom CAD and radio upgrades. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Zwicker, that the Valleycom CAD project and new radio system be referred to the Public Safety Committee. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, moving on to audience comment, is there anybody who wanted to address the council? Let's give your name and city of residence, you have five minutes.
Hi, my name is Audrey Adams, and I'm resident of, a very proud resident of Renton. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. I, one of the reasons I'm so proud of being a Renton resident is all the people that have spoken tonight, you're still smiling, you're still listening, you're still here. I can't tell you enough how good it feels to be part of the group that was annexed, and I'm, I have hopes for the people up in Skyway, because I know how much that will mean to them to be part of the city. But to the other reasons that you, of course, expect me to speak on today, I am extremely appreciative that you allowed an opportunity for us to talk about, or to review the issue on water fluoridation in the Utility Committee, and I am amazingly appreciative that you're going to hear it in a Committee of the Whole meeting on, I understand, November 26, that's 6:00 PM. This is big. This is one of the reasons why I really love being here, is that you listen to the people and you're not closed-minded. There isn't a closed mind. I can see it on your faces, I can see it in, this room is a community of people who care. And there is only, I can't think of another council who has been so open-minded. Now, I'm not saying that you've been convinced of anything, you're going to hear both sides, I assume, as I understand it, on the 26th, and that's as it should be. I am a tiny bit concerned that 15 minutes is a very, very short period of time for a very complex topic, but I think it's just a start. So in preparation for that, there is a study that has come out recently that I know that you'll want to be aware of, and it's a study by Harvard School of Public Health, and it was published just this July, and it basically was looking at 27 other studies, so it's a review of studies. You might remember that I brought something to you last June, it was a critique by Dr. Bill Osmanson, who's going to be presenting on the 26th. It was a critique of 92 different studies on effects of fluoride on neurodevelopment. That was rather long, rather cumbersome. Well, Harvard also decided they were going to take a look at some of these studies, because there seems to be a lot of inconsistency, and I totally get that it's hard to figure out what's the right thing to do, because I am in absolute no doubt that every single person in this room only wants the best for our kids, right? No matter what that happens to be. No convincing there. And I also am certain that everybody in this room thinks that brains are more important than teeth. Actually, brains are more important than most things. But it's, this study is a pretty groundbreaking study, because in the United States, we haven't been doing a very good job of studying fluoridation. But Harvard Public School of Public Health decided to take a look and looked at 27 studies on neurodevelopment. In other words, how fluoride affects the brain of fetuses and babies. And this is pretty groundbreaking information. Most of the studies are from around the world. Other parts of the world have been studying this much more rigorously than we have here. I brought it for you, I was having some problems with my internet, so I'm sorry, Mr. Covington, I did not, I wasn't able to email it to you, so I copied it off, and we'll figure out my email. I can send it by email to as soon as that comes, my internet comes back. But, so one thing that I'd like you to look at when I pass this out is, now, they've critiqued each of these 27 studies, and the overall determination is that there is a potential risk. They have found neurodevelopmental risk from fluoride, but these studies are essentially looking at studies primarily done in other countries where there are areas where calcium fluoride is high in the groundwater. So it's actually calcium fluoride that these studies are referring to. The fluoride that's added artificially to water, such as sodium fluoride that we have here, isn't, is considered far more toxic, and it looks like I'm out of time. But I just wanted you to take note that this is sort of in preparation, and I appreciate very much your open-mindedness.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Zwicker?
I move that the council meeting be adjourned to executive session for approximately 45 minutes to discuss two items, labor negotiations and personnel issues, with no official action to be taken, and that the council meeting be adjourned when the executive session is adjourned.
Second?
It's been moved by Mr. Zwicker, seconded by Mr. Corman, that we adjourn into executive session for 45, approximately 45 minutes, to discuss labor negotiations and personnel issues. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
We just want every kid to be able to walk or ride to school.
If one school can make the area around safer for kids, I bet we can do it at other schools, too. Hi, I'm Mia. I want to be a healthy kid, but with all this soda around, it's not always easy to do. Sugar, 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 sugar. We're surrounded. Sugar, 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 sugar. I mean, why can't there be milk and water here instead? Sugar, sugar. That's a lot of sugar. I wondered what we could do, so I asked some grown-ups around town. I'm here with Sue. What do you do?
Well, I'm the Recreation Director for the City of Seattle Parks and Recreation Department.
So what's different around here?
For our sodas, you won't find a sugary soda in there. Everything is diet or water.
Why are you trying to get rid of all the sugar?
Have you heard about kids getting more overweight than ever before? Well, we're trying to help with that.
My name is Sanitia Parker, and I am the Health Ministry Lead at Tabernacle Missionary Baptist Church. The first program that we've changed actually is our feeding program. We have made...